It is 7:00 PM. I'd like to go ahead and call the regular city council meeting to order for Monday, January 8th, 2024. Please rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Holly, will you call a roll, please? Lanyon?
Martin?
Here.
Jenkins?
Here.
Ben Osber?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Gilroy?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
All right, and before I ask for approval of the agenda, I'd like to go ahead and wish our city manager John Hannifin a happy birthday. You know, I've already heard that this is gonna blow his diet for the new year, so glad I could help.
Appreciate it.
Maybe we should sing? Somebody sang for me, so I think we should sing.
We should.
Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday dear John, happy birthday to you, and many more.
That was a lot better without me being part of the chorus. So I think we found a good weekly.
And just for the viewing community, those are green and white, however, there is a blue happy birthday on there because there's another big thing happening this evening, and it's U of M playing for the national championship. We've got our councilman Ryan's in his uniform, he's ready to go, in case they need the extra, so. With that, I would like to ask for approval of the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to add item F, traffic control order number 34, onto the agenda, please.
Thank you so much, Councilman Janks. Thank you so much, Councilman Janks. Holly, do we need a roll because we're adding? Okay, could you call the roll, please? Pratt?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Osber?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Now, I'm looking for audience participation.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Exactly.
Thank you so much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that carries. Now, we have time for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes for each presentation. Is there anybody that'd like to come forward? All right. Moving along, we've got our council meeting minutes of December 11th, 2023. I'm looking for a motion to approve unless there's changes that need to be made.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Thank you so much. Do I support?
Support.
Thank you both. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that carries. And Brandon, you had an opportunity to look at accounts payable for this evening.
I did. It looks large, but that's because we basically went a month from our last meeting, and we did a lot of our tax payments out during it. Didn't have any questions on it, it's all pretty standard stuff. So with that, I will make a motion to approve checks 77219 through 77264, and ACH 653 through 683, for a grand total of $667,582,075.
Thank you so much. Yes, carry.
I just wanna be sure we're not getting bootleg software here. So we're getting Microsoft 265, I'm thinking, a week's sale?
Should that be 365?
It should say 365, but...
Very good, very good catch.
Unfortunately, it doesn't affect that.
Yes, and Steve?
Question on page three of the $75,000 for the live building property pool, pool renewal. I don't know if we don't have a pool anymore than I don't remember.
It's pool insurance.
Yeah, pool insurance.
I want help.
I thought it was cool, they didn't have insurance.
But over a hundred dollars, we just don't have these.
But thank you.
Other than that, it's doing swimming, Mike.
Any other questions regarding accounts payable? If not, I'm looking for support. Thank you so much. Holly, will you call the roll for accounts payable, please? Ben Osber?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Osber?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
All right, moving along, for council board appointments, I feel in this past year that everybody that was assigned and also those alternates, that those assignments worked out well. With that being said, I'd like to keep our council appointments status quo. Holly, do you need me to read off the appointments and assignments in the SDM?
Well, my only suggestion, with the approval of America, a second alternate for NISA sometimes would be helpful because there's been a couple times where council members were not able to be there, and then having a third alternate, so then we have a...
Just a question, I don't know this, I'm embarrassed to say it. I don't know if anybody else wants to be second alternate, like if it's appropriate, I'd be happy to serve in that role.
Okay.
Because I filled in a couple times in, frankly, five days.
And that would be, yeah. Can we have a second alternate?
We did it with Noah Ballinger previously.
Yep, okay, all right. If nobody's opposed to that, then I would like to then add City Manager John Hannifin as an additional alternate to NISA. That would be very helpful.
Do you need motion to have effect, or anything like that? What do you think?
And do you need me to read through each assignment? And, okay, so I'll read through them. For EDC TIPA, our representative will remain Steve Jenkins with an alternate Scott Ben Osber. For DDA, the representative would be myself with Mayor Pro Tem Brandon Lanyon. For Planning Commission, it will be Brandon Lanyon with an alternate Tom Pratt. For Cemetery Board, it will be Scott Ben Osber with the alternate of Terry Hanson. For NISA, our representative will be Tom Pratt with alternates Dan Ryan and our city manager John Hannifin. For Parks and Recreation Commission, our representative will be Terry Hanson with our alternate Scott Ben Osber. For Accounts Payable, our representative will remain our mayor pro tem Brandon Lanyon with our alternate as Terry Hanson. And for Zoning Board of Appeals, our representative will remain Dan Ryan with our alternate Steve Jenkins. I'm looking for a motion to move that forward.
I'd make a motion to approve this later as written.
Thank you so much. Do I support?
Say aye.
Thank you both. Holly, will you call the roll? Lanyon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Osber?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
All right, I'd like to take a brief pause in our action items and go back up to our public hearing on the 2024-2028 Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which I will call it order at 7:07. John?
Yeah, so thank you. This is our public hearing for the draft, final draft of the 2024-2028 Parks and Recreation Master Plan. The Parks Commission has been working on the plan for about four months or so. We discussed it at many meetings of that board, discussed it here a couple times. We did a public survey, which I thought we had great response. And just some of the highlights again of the survey, most of our parks were rated excellent to good. Memorial Park, which does have a lot of amenities, was rated a little bit lower, but still fairly good, about 74% of respondents, so that was some good positive feedback. The top four increase in amenities was 50% of folks said they'd like to see more paved biking and walking pathways, 43% in the splash park, 30% in the ice skating rink, and 27% in the park. So, a lot of work, I know work for the sake of time, redessing things down. This public hearing's been advertised for about, I think, at least four weeks because we're required to do that, I think it's more like six weeks. The plan's been available online at the front counter. We've not received any written correspondence that I'm aware of to date, so that's all I have at this point.
All right, great. Any questions for City Manager John Hannifin? Yes, Scott?
Yeah, the question, is this plan in its plan form, or is it still able to be revised?
So, the plan is, I would call it 99.9% complete, and the reason you leave that point one is if there is something going through the public hearing process that the Parks Commission hears about and decides to take an amendment or a change of the plan, that you do that.
So, there's a reference in there in the tree, replacement and keeping them healthy.
Preservation.
Preservation. I would be interested in seeing tree additions added into that?
Yeah.
Do they could plant new trees?
It's a great idea.
Yeah.
All right, thank you so much. Any other comments or questions for... All right, then I will go ahead and close our public... Yes. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Do we have any comments from the public regarding our Parks and Recreation Master Plan? All right, excellent. Thank you. All right, then, I will call to close the public hearing at 7:10, and we will go ahead and resume with our action items. And this next is our election commission appointments. We have a memo in our packet from Holly Thompson, our city clerk, so I'm gonna turn this over to Holly.
Yes, each January before your council election, we appoint the election commission, and that consists of myself, the city manager, and the charterer, and it's been like that for probably 20 years or so right now. Sometimes it changes around with the employee, but it's fairly standard, so.
All right. All right, we have a requested action on the memo that Holly has included, and I give that motion to draw forward, please.
I'll make a motion. Excuse me. I'll make a motion to appoint city clerk Holly Thompson, city manager John Hannifin, and treasurer Tommy to the election commission.
Thank you so much. Do I support?
Support.
All right, thank you both. If there's no other questions or discussion, Holly, will you call the roll, please? Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Osber?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Our next action item is to set date for council visioning session. We have a memo in packet from our city manager John Hannifin, I'll turn that over to him.
Thank you, Mayor Gilroy, Mr. Council. So, this is our annual visioning session, which sets the course for the upcoming budget year, so it'll be for the 2024-2025 budget year. And since this is really the, I guess, the second one, since I've been here almost two years now, so a part of this session will be a look at where we're at. I mean, we're, at that point, we'll be seven months into the current fiscal year, so we'll give an update on the goals and objectives that we set out for the current fiscal year that we're in, and then take a look ahead to the next year. So, I have a suggested date in there, and it just was one that seemed to be an open space in the calendar. I'm certainly amenable to other dates, other than I will be on vacation the first week in March, so that's out, but other than that, I'm not moving to be...
Because I won't be available to be in Traverse City for a work conference. I mean, obviously, you don't have to cancel because of me. Y'all can do perfectly good job without me, I guarantee, but I will not be there if it's on the twenty eighth.
And I would not be there.
On the twenty...
Or traveling too far.
Okay, all right. I think we probably would like to put another date. I mean...
Yeah, we can read, the other thing too is it's important to just keep it on our radar, that we want to have this session, we want to have it well in advance, and this is a good thing, the city charter here requires that the manager present a draft, at least a final draft budget to all of you for the first meeting in April, so we refer to have the visioning session, you know, sometime in February, or even the second week, week of March, is fine, but knowing that we have other boards and commissions that week.
I mean, the week before, I'm free.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, could we bump it back a week to February 21st? Would that work for people? Is that...
My only thing, if we bump it back a week, is Thursday good with everybody? I have baseball practice Tuesday and Wednesday.
Never come to a baseball practice.
No, all right, so...
Thursday, December.
Yeah, so Thursday, February 22nd?
That's awesome, that'll work.
All right. So, with that being said, we have a requested action in the memo. If we could go ahead and insert the date of February 22nd at 6:00 PM, and then I'm assuming that our location will be TV.
Correct.
Okay, so I could make that motion.
Make a motion to set a date, time, location for the annual council visioning session for 2024-25 fiscal year of 22 February, Thursday at 6:00 PM.
Thank you so much. Terry, do I support?
Support.
All right, thank you. Holly, will you call the roll, please? Pratt?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Osber?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Our next action item is set date for city manager annual evaluation, and we have a memo in here, and it looks like there's a suggested date of February 12th. John?
Yeah, again, another thing that we should do annually, we do have five Mondays in this month, so we have a little extra week. We did use an evaluation tool last year. I'll use something very similar and make sure that all of you get it, the latest you would get it would be at the next council meeting.
Okay.
We have a chance, we'll have it delivered either digitally or hard copy, so.
All right.
And that is part of regular council meeting, we'll have it at the end.
All right. Any questions or further discussion? If not, I'm looking for that requested action.
I would move that we set the city manager's annual evaluation for the regular meeting that we have on February 12th, 2024.
Thank you. Steve, do I support?
Support.
Thank you both. Holly, will you call the roll, please? Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Osber?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
All right. Our last action item of this evening is the proposed traffic control order number 34. We have a memo in our packet from our city manager John Hannifin, from Chief of Police Jeff Weiss. I'll turn this over to our city manager.
Thank you. Actually, Chief Weiss is gonna walk us through this, will he?
I certainly can. So, you're all aware of the issues that we have with traffic at the corner of Highland and Riverside Street, to and from school. I've had meetings with Superintendent Spina references. I've actually went up and monitored traffic. I've actually went up and helped Terry Nelson with crossing guard duty at the intersection, and I directed traffic during MSU Spartan games for 25 years, and this rivals that. So...
Not a joke either.
That's a disappointment.
Yes, yes.
All right.
So, after talking with Superintendent Spina, there is a long-term goal of their fix that he's talked about before, I think that many of you are aware of, but for the short-term fix, and when I say short-term, I'm months to years, the only way to fix this issue at the current time is with a traffic control order, and that's to institute a no-left turn, and it's best depicted by the map that I included. It will result in a no-left turn from Riverside onto Highland, and then no-left turn on Riverside from Highland, essentially creating a one-way traffic flow to and from the school during school days of 8:15 to 8:45, and 3:30 to 3:50. Up to this morning, there was a post on the Winston Community Update that there was an issue this morning. This is a short-term fix, best to put a Band-Aid on it to create a safer environment for the children.
Right. And with this, will this also relieve some of the heartburn that we have for our residents living on Riverside?
I believe so, yes, because one of the main issues we have is parents and people driving, just people driving off, kids using that as a left turn to get back to Church Street, blocking private driveways.
Okay.
I anticipate this will keep the traffic flowing a little bit quicker and free up some of that traffic gridlock during the school. And of course, for enforcement, in talking to Superintendent Spina, this will involve a heavy education piece with parents, messaging that will go out through the school to those parents, a heavy Facebook and social media campaign before enforcement statement.
Wonderful. I think this is, like you said, it's a short-term solution, but I think it's very much needed. And I, you know, we did not have problems during our construction season over there on Putnam and Riverside, obviously, but now that that is all back open, I think that this is a great remedy until something more permanent can be done. Terry?
Did I read something about closed calls?
And I witnessed closed calls up there, and the issue is, it's a fairly low-speed intersection, however, you know, kids in preschool through fifth grade, and it's the kids are walking to school or biking to school where these closed calls happen. I did pull a traffic crash down for the last 10 years. Relatively few crashes, however, what we can't track is how many hair misses that we have, because we just can't track that. There's not a lot of closed calls.
I was gonna ask you to put a number on that. Isn't like once a week a kid?
At least once.
Does a closed call, or is it a...
A month once a day?
It's been pretty significant because our previous two chiefs of police have both been over there, involved in morning and afternoon traffic flow. We've had our crossing guards actually here during council meetings, yeah.
I mean, we have, I mean, I take Harvey to that school every day, and so you see, if you're looking at the map, there's the two red dots, that's where the crossing guard stands, the lights, they're across the street there. At least once a week, I see a car blow through her truck while she's trying to stop traffic, and like she's holding kids back because parents aren't paying attention, or they're in a rush, or they're... So, that intersection there is chaos. I prefer to walk Harvey to school because I don't want to drive in there.
My other question would be, why didn't we do this years ago?
That's an answer I can't answer.
Is there, I'm new to this stuff, so is there something from the people in the rest of people?
We had the whole thing with housing from the school recently, right? So, the traffic is exacerbated in that area by a couple things. One is less people sending their kids on bus to school, and part of that is long bus routes, people don't want their kids on the bus, and part of it is 25% of our kids' school choicing, and all those people driving their kids. So, an area that didn't used to have so much traffic now has all this additional traffic.
That's a decent answer.
And it will speed things up, because I've sat on Riverside waiting at that stop sign for 10 minutes because someone was wanting to turn left and just sat there.
And could...
Because you can't go anywhere, you're going right onto Highland, it just goes to the school, so they sat there. So, like this will definitely help speed that intersection up.
John, do we still have the alternate bus pickup drop-off, and is that still being utilized by parents? And can we also encourage Superintendent Spina that that is still, during this education process of the one-way loop, that there is still that alternate?
It was still in play when we were actively under construction on Putnam. I'm not sure if they instituted, this being, I think today was the first day back this morning, so, yes. I'm not sure if they have it now, but they can certainly redeploy if they need to do that. And frankly, they're gonna have to, and we'll cover that in our construction update because we're gonna start construction there again.
Right.
Shortly after, you know, April 15th.
Okay. So, yes, Scott?
Yeah, I was wondering, what are the ideas for the long-term situation?
So, I guess, just in the general sense, it's more of a larger circulation area around the school, up to and including the possibility of a drive lane heading east and then connecting north onto Van Etter.
Yeah, making it a longer route, making it just a true one-way in through that parking lot, and then coming back out onto Church. Now, in your memo, is there specific language that you need read for the motion, Chief?
That, in the traffic control order itself, order number 34, it lays out pretty well where the signage and the times are. As far as language for the motion, I'd prefer to...
I think we can just make a motion to approve traffic control order number 34 presented.
All right, thank you so much. Do I support?
Support.
Cool, thank you. Any other further discussion? All right, Holly, will you call the roll? Ben Osber?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Osber?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
All right. That concludes our action items for this evening, and moving along to our discussion items, we have our road diet. I'll defer to our city manager John Hannifin for an update on that.
Thank you. Shortly before the holidays, for the state took a long hiatus for two weeks. I had a meeting with a whole host of MDOT folks, and we talked about their most recent public input campaign for the road diet and the feedback that they received. MDOT is planning on holding a public meeting in February for this project. MDOT representative or two will also attend either our next meeting in January or the first meeting in February, just to talk about the process. One of the challenges with having the public hearing in February, this is an MDOT challenge, they've, you know, and there was a decided to be a funder of this project, in that meeting they said that that would push the timing of their funding for a fall construction letting, which is, again, I know that's their timing, I didn't, you know, it's like me not wanting it to snow. It's gonna snow, it's gonna snow, I can't change that, so. But anyway, so that's the update on that. We did get a pretty overwhelming response of comments, quite a folks from outside of the city limit, as you can imagine, commented, and so we talked about that dynamic a little bit, but be as it may, and the meeting would be a joint meeting with the city. One of the things I tried to underscore for them is that, you know, the origin, and I think it's important for us to continue to message, the origin for the city wanting a road diet was for safety. It's not for recreation, it's not for biking, it's not for some sort of, you know, assault on parking in the downtown, which is, you know, illogical if you know all the work that we bring into our downtown. So, I think it's very, very critical for us to continue to say that, because that was some of the comments that I read, you know, this is just about bike lanes, and that's not it. I mean, the bike lanes are part of the project, but the bike lanes, I know for us as a whole, that's not a deal breaker. It's safety at that intersection, and the origin of it was having proper turn lanes to improve the safety conditions there. And so, I think that's very important, and, you know, I've learned to say things like that five times, so I'm up to four, so it's turn lanes and safety. And the road diet is our mode to get there, so. And I'll give more, like in my weekly report, like when that date is located or targeted. And we talked through all the nuances that come with holding a public meeting in February, we have to make sure that we have an altered date, because if it snows more than a half inch, people will say the weather was too bad and they couldn't make it out, but so we'll cover all those things in the next...
Excellent, all right. Any questions for, yes, Terry?
I don't remember when it was, but there was something about wanting the city to have a better representation in social media, and I thought we maybe contracted with somebody to represent us in social media or something like that.
And frankly, I think that we do a great job of messaging. But, you know, you can go down the road, the whole of, you know, we're not reaching any of the 15 to 19-year-olds because I'm not doing TikTok videos, which I don't think anybody wants to see. You're close enough to the necessary.
Right, 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 right.
So my concern is people that we've heard, that they come in and they say, this is the first I've heard of it. And I think it really is the first they've heard of it. So I'm just, I thought there was something where we had somebody who wanted to contract from the school.
We did have something, yes, Terry.
There was some people.
You're right.
We did have a public comment of somebody that offered their services, that was in their wheelhouse. I know that we took down that information, and it's a part of our council administration meeting. It's just not something that I don't believe our city staff has pursued. But I agree with John. That's a great topic for our visioning session when we come together. How better do we communicate in a larger arena?
Yeah, yeah. And this is a great sort of a test of that, of how well have we communicated? And how many people came in and said, this is the first I've heard of it?
Sure.
So, just curious.
That's a tried and true method when someone doesn't like the decision we're going to make. And I can tell you with 30 years of experience in the public, going back for the days of the internet, I can date myself that, you know, I read your memo, it's the first I heard of it.
Right. If there's, oh, yes, Scott?
Yeah, I was wondering about, it was kind of made by the gentleman that was here at the last meeting about trucks, that interning. And I couldn't tell if what he was saying had any delivered here in that, yeah, I can't.
My comment would be that's something that we would make sure that would be added before we do.
Right, yep.
And that is a real dynamic in Colorado, though, that's what's true.
It is.
The signs up there, you can see it.
Yep. And I think the person that best be able to speak to that is going to be the MDOT representative and our engineer. So I think that's going to be very helpful to have the MDOT representative here, so that we can ask all those questions to somebody that, you know, does this.
Yeah, I mean, my first thought as well is, MDOT's recommended this, so they must have thought.
Sure. Yep. All right, well.
You want to trade with the state government? Tell me from someone who does it.
Picking back on to the road diet, I will go ahead and ask our city manager for a construction project update.
So we're with Norman Putnam. We're bucking up for the winter season. Knowing that's temporary payment, we're monitoring closely. I drive it several times a day. If the inevitable of a pothole or something like that shows up, we'll obviously, we'll fix that. We're also watching pretty closely the, you just get on the north side of Church. There's kind of a little bit of a speed bump there, so it's a little slow. And then we'll be, the contractor for the second phase is under contract. We've had our pre-construction meeting. When we have a better idea on the actual construction launch date, we'll broadcast that when the high happens. The other thing we'll be doing is meeting, have a construction meeting with Spicer, I think this week or next, to talk about timing for Lloyd and Williams. And Iron Horse is the contractor of record for those two streets, which is reassuring. And so we'll have our kickoff meeting with them, and then we'll, as promised, we'll put the residents on those streets and those areas. We'll have specific quick public meetings or meetings, as long as people want to talk to us about that.
Okay, excellent. Any questions regarding construction update? Your seat hands? Yes, Dan.
So second phase on Putnam there, that's when, we still get a lot of questions about the trees and all that. After the second phase is, I'm assuming, when, and we have in our budget and in our plan, replacing not everyone, but a lot of those capul trees.
Yep, that's correct. What will happen, the curb line is going to change. The stumps were mostly ground out, so those will be gone. And then, yeah, after the street is completed, we'll plant trees. The only delay might be waiting until the fall, which is really the early fall, which is the optimal time to plant trees. But if we're done early enough in the spring, we may do that as well. Yes, those are part of the budget, yes.
We have a trees czar now, too, don't we?
We do.
Yeah, okay, cool.
Mr. Smith?
Yep.
Small town yesterday.
Or Monday, Friday, sorry.
All right. Thank you so much for that update. Moving along on our agenda, our correspondence. We received the Friends of the Williamson Park annual report. That is a part of your traffic for you to be able to read at your leisure. If you do have any questions regarding it, certainly reach out to city manager John Hannafin, and he can give those answered for you. Going down our agenda to our department head reports. John?
Tomorrow, planning. Wednesday, parks. Thursday, NESA. Next Monday, TIPA. Tuesday, DVA, so.
So, break back on schedule meetings.
Can't wait. Cause things are wild. So great start of the new year.
All right, thank you. And Chief, Happy New Year.
Yeah, thank you. Just a couple of things. Got a report from the 911 Center of our 2023 Calls for Service. And for 2023, responded to a total of 3,025 calls for service, which is all encompassing everything. For 2024, we're going to start generating a monthly report for council, which will include traffic stops, calls for service, any large projects perhaps that we're doing. So look for that in 2024 for the February meeting. For staffing, unfortunately, we did have the gentleman that was slated to go to the Mid-Michigan Police Academy at the last hour canceled. However, we did find a replacement. I'll be meeting with him Wednesday to offer a position in the police academy going through May through August. So it delayed us for a few months, getting back up to full strength, but it was just a slight hiccup. We do have two reserve officer applicants right now that are going through their ride long, one of which is Brandon Nepp, that's with Officer Cawkins in the back today. And then we have two more interviews for this week for two more potential reserve officers. So we can start putting some.
How's our current cadet doing in her academy?
She's doing well.
Good.
Actually, Bonnie and I will be doing a site visit, Washtenaw Community College Police Academy on Thursday to see how she's doing. But she's doing great on all her tests. I get weekly updates from the director, so everything's on track.
All right, excellent.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Little question?
Yes, sir.
We have a bunch of break-ins on Middle Street, middle and Vizion, that area, at least that's what I heard.
There was. There was three largely from automobiles where someone got into unlocked cars and stole credit cards. They were identified and were seeking charges on those two individuals. So the, I can't take credit, Officer Smith did the investigation, so he's responsible for doing the great investigation of that. They weren't out from our area. They were from outside our area. Everyone keep your car doors locked.
And keep your credit cards in the car.
And they're not smashing windows. They're just opening car doors and grabbing lots of them.
That's reassuring.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, please extend our thanks to Officer Smith.
I will, thank you.
For being diligent on that. All right, I'll go around the table, start with, well, we didn't have really any committee meetings in December. Does anybody want to report on anything? NESA?
Oh, hi.
Oh, Dan went.
We approved the budget for NESA for this coming year. Their fiscal year follows the calendar year. We did have a discussion about their budget process and trying to get it to mirror more of what the municipalities that participate in NESA, how their budget process works with the special budget meeting where you come together and you sit down and you discuss the budget items and have a discussion that way. And then we, they have multiple budget reports that you kind of put together to look through and kind of giving us the full treasurer's report for the budget instead of the multiple documents to make it easier to go through. That was a big discussion. And then also, this is actually going to continue Thursday night, but there's a discussion of how we, if we need to, and how to man an ambulance at the Leroy Station in Weberville. A lot of discussion. I put in a request that we try to figure out what the runtime is for a lot of the service area with, between the Williamson Station and the Weberville Station, and try and do a study on those numbers and seeing, because if you just look at call volume, the vast majority of the call volume does come from this area. But how many of those, like let's say you're on the edge of lock, or you're farther over in Wheatfield, what is our actual, what's our runtime on some of these things? So they're looking into that, and we're trying to figure out how to, because now that we have the two, for quite some time, we've had two 24-hour paramedic units, but how do we best serve the entire NESA district?
Great. Well, thanks for that update. And then will you be there this Thursday for the further discussion? Excellent. All right. Look forward to that coming back. Anybody else have anything?
I attended a very important gathering yesterday at Ford Field, and everything came up very good.
All right, fantastic. Appreciate that update. Will you be there this coming Sunday?
I'll be watching it.
I haven't washed my Lions t-shirt all season, so I feel like that's very much. All right, well, we have another opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes for presentation. Anybody like to come forward?
Thank you. I'm there. Monica Shaver, Ingham County Commissioner, District 15. I was just reminded myself that 7:30 Michigan kickoff, right?
Yep.
Okay, so let's take a quick here.
Yep.
So first and foremost, so a lot of the times that I come to the city meetings, the township meetings, it's to gather information from all of you. I sit back and I like to take in all the details. I go through your board packet, and I actually look at all those different things. So when I'm sitting in my meetings at the county, I can figure out how best to serve this district. So when I'm sitting back and I'm listening to all the details that are brought into it so that I can serve you in that capacity and wise. But so this year, it's going to be a little bit of a change. I'm changing from the Human Services Department to the County Services Department. That is going to broaden my knowledge. As you know, I've been a county commissioner for one full year. The knowledge has been amazing, overwhelming, but yet there's so many ways to serve our district that I'm finding that we, that I can jump up and help with. So I'll be doing county services. County services is much more the administration portion of each of the admin departments within the county. So that'll be interesting as well. So that. But also the county, Tri-County of Aging, I just want to put it out there that if you know of seniors that are in need, there are a lot of resources through Tri-County of Aging, especially with septic. A lot of people are understanding what's coming down from the state. There's a potential for septic inspections to go across the state. So right now, Ingham County has point of sale. As we know, at the state level, they're potentially looking at a five-year septic inspection across the board. I don't believe so, but a 10-year septic inspection across the board, which would make a huge impact. I have so many of our community members here who haven't sold their home in 30, 40 years, okay? So, or it can be point of sale across the state. We don't know. That's going to be coming up in the next administration, or the next set of the state. But along with that, the Ingham County Board of Commissioners set aside, I believe, about $1 million in American Rescue fund money for failing septic systems, for people that can't quite afford it that are older. So if you know of anybody, let's reach out before, you know, before something's enacted and before money is utilized. Bring it back to our district. So Parks and Trails applications, that is a hot topic right now because we have three applications that are being submitted. The funding is running short due to a lot of overruns on previous applications that have been accepted in 2020, 2021. COVID nailed them. Prices shot up, doubled the price. We have overrun some of our townships in Ingham County. Have come in over $700,000 overrun to a $1.6 million overrun on a project for Parks and Trails. So I don't know where that's at. That is something we just have to work through and constantly be working through to see where the funding is going to be with that. Also, I continue to be a strong support in public safety. I believe that we just, you know, when I'm knocking doors, one of the number one reasons people live, Williamson Township, Lock, Leroy, Norridian, public safety. They can tuck their kids in at night. So I continue to be a voice and a strong voice, and my voice sometimes is the only vote in certain situations. But I continue to do that because I feel very, very strongly that many of the places in Lansing deserve the same type of safety and security that we have right here in Williamson Township, or Leroy's. So I fight for that. So I just filed my paperwork today for reelection for 2025. I feel strongly again that I have the ability to be a voice. I have the ability to be a voice that is, you know, working together with the other county commissioners. And we have to work together. We have to pull together on the things that we can work together on. There are many things that we're going to be disagreeing on as a whole Board of 15 members. But the things that we agree on, we have to pull together for the community and for Ingham County. So any questions at all? Please don't hesitate to reach out to me, okay?
Thank you. All right. If there's no other audience participation, I'll go around the table for Councilwoman Travis. Terry?
Friends from out of town over the Christmas time told me to tell you that Williamson is a cute, cute, beautifully set-up little town. They've not been here before, and they were just blown away. I mean, the Christmas decorations were amazing, really. So, and that's coming from a totally objective point of view, but really, you guys did really well.
Excellent. All right, ready? Scott?
So the park plan is missing any reference to this tree sculpture here. And I was concerned about that, so I talked to Earl. And there's good news on this front. They're actually going, so as you know, the current sculptures were taken very seriously. And they're now, some of them are gone because they're all deteriorating. However, there's going to be a new, there's a personnel in charge of a new project that does the exact same thing, except with oak trees, and recreate those that are. So very induced. And that was, that whole project was so cool, and so they're going to lead to it in a similar way. In December, the tree sculptors don't have anything to do.
Sure.
So they like the idea of a place to come and sculpt in the off-season kind of thing. So the whole thing's just really cool, and it's going to happen again, so I'm induced. So I'm passing it.
All right, thanks. Dan? All right. Well, I have two comments. I don't usually root for Michigan, but I will say, go Blue. Also, thank you so much for the Williamson Police Department Facebook post regarding the storm that's coming in, and that it's just a reminder that our DPW does need to get out there on our primary and secondary streets for snow removals, so there is no parking on our streets from 2:00 to 5:00 a.m. If there is a snow incident where we need to have 24 hours of no parking on streets, we'll make sure that we publicize that on our city websites, our Facebook, social media, all that good stuff. But with that, I think we all need to get out of here and go watch the local call, so I will call to adjourn at 7:45.